Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vator. It's my distinct honor to welcome all of you to this regularly scheduled city council meeting. I express a special appreciation to the council members who are present with us. We'll officially declare this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on the 25th of May, 2017. And would now proceed with our roll call.
Andy Wilson.
President.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
President.
Mike Parsons.
He has indicated that he would be absent. He's now working in California temporarily. And his, of course, you will probably recall, he's asked that his council approve his participation by telephone, which can be accomplished by motion. But perhaps we should continue with roll call before we proceed with that action.
Okay. So, okay, I'll leave him as undetermined?
Yes.
Okay. Leona Sandin-Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Also present. So we do have a quorum regardless. So let's proceed with our pledge of allegiance and then we'll carry out this motion. Would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, let's proceed with council consideration of Mr. Parsons' participation by telephone.
I'll make a motion to approve Mike Parsons' calling into the council meeting.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Schei to approve Mr. Parsons' participation, as noted. Do we have a second for that motion?
Oh, I'll second, okay.
Okay, seconded. This is Hunter. All right, any thoughts or observations before we go?
Do you know how long this duration is? During December?
It's intermittent. So I know he's going to be gone for probably a month, and then he'll be back for a short period, and then he'll return. It goes that way until September. So, any other thoughts or questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. So we can, at this moment, contact him. You have his number.
Yep.
This is Mike.
Hi, Mike, this is Jill. We are in an open session, you're on speakerphone, and council just approved a motion to authorize you to participate by telephone. Are you able to hear us okay? Are you able to hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but can you hear me okay? This is the mayor speaking, Mike.
Yes, I can.
Perfect, okay. Did you hear him down there sufficiently? All righty, well, let's proceed with the mayor's report. The one item that is on the agenda involves the big community meeting that took place on Saturday at the 20th. It was hosted at the Fellowship Hall, the Assembly Church here in Vator. And I can report, as a matter of public record, that we had 44 individuals present. It was, from my mind, an extremely successful event. And we set in motion the, perhaps, the formulation of a new entity that might generate energy and enthusiasm for the overall good of the community of Vator. It would not be a city-sponsored event, but completely resident-driven. So there'll be a second meeting that now has been scheduled for all, and I would invite all present to come to it, on June 10th at 10 o'clock at the same location. It's a Saturday morning. And I think there will be a concerted effort to establish a 501(c)(3) entity that, and establish perhaps a leadership committee that will oversee future meetings and events. But, of course, the big announcement that has yet to hit the newspapers, but will shortly, is the presentation made by Jim Mabbett, the superintendent of the Castle Rock School District, who announced to all present and the world that they are going to be renovating the school property that formerly housed the City of Vator school system that we had previously. And they're going to be building facilities there to accommodate preschool and Head Start activities and other adult learning center, complete with playground equipment and a fully functional city-used soccer field. So it's an historic moment for the city of Vator. All present were quite excited about that huge announcement. That was the essence of the big community meeting. I thought it would be appropriate to point out to our elected officials that the Association of Washington Cities is hosting a municipal budgeting and fiscal management workshop scheduled for July 13th and 14th at Leavenworth on the east side of the Cascades. I can report that our city clerk, Jill, has been to this conference twice, and I believe I've been to it. It's been a long time ago, but it's very instructional, informative, and would be of great value to any of you who might be interested. And there, I believe, is some potential scholarship funding available for cities under 5,000 in population. So if any of you city council members would feel prompted to attend, just contact either myself or Jill. Did everybody have this plan? Okay, all right. So the city parks are, McMurphy Park is now open officially. And we're in the process of repairing the damaged murals at Warden Park. There, I think it won't be too much longer before they're renovated and looking good. So with that, I think that would conclude the mayor's report. Mr. Wilson.
I've seen two kids again coming out from underneath the old jail the other night.
Yep.
From under it.
Yes. I can report that the park board had a meeting on Tuesday night. They addressed that problem. We had some people in attendance at it, that was noted. And our public employee has been assigned to fix that. Do you think he's gotten to it yet?
I'm not, I don't think so. I think he had something else he was going to do first, and then that's coming second, so.
It's been noted, and the sheriff's department is aware, so we'll see.
Are they just playing, or are they training?
They have a sleeping bag under it. I mean, it's a strange place to camp, if that's what they were trying to do, but hey, who can understand the minds of the campers?
That time of year.
Spring. But anyway, there were a number of issues addressed by the park board, and so they're functioning. And so let it be known, in case you hear rumors, which sometimes circulate, that the park board is not doing anything, that is not fact-based, so that's, I pass that along for your collective.
They've got part of it.
They've got part of it. Exactly. All right, any other city council reports?
Have we let the power back on yet to the park for the country cruise? That's coming up here this next week.
It's coming up.
It's scheduled, I just talked to the PUD today, it's scheduled to be turned on on the first, and they're, so they're going to come out on the first and turn it on, and then the country cruisers are coming that same day to get a key to make sure that, well, our public works employee will be there to make sure that everything's working fine, and it will be on through the weekend, and then it will be shut back off again after their activity.
Excellent. Other reports, council observations? Okay, well, then, let's proceed with our agenda, which requires approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 5/25/2017.
Okay, Mr. Wilson has submitted the motion to approve the agenda as written, as he noted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded? This is Hunter. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Okay, that voting was unanimous.
Mr. Parsons, you approved that, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So that motion is carried. We will now proceed with the approval of the minutes for the council meeting, the previous one, and the city council workshop.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for March, excuse me, May 11th, 2017, and the workshop minutes for May 18th, 2017.
Okay, Mr. Schei has made a motion to approve those minutes, as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll take second.
Aha, I heard that, Mr. Daley, quick. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right, well done. Okay, that motion is carried. And now the approval of our May vouchers.
I make a motion. We approve the vouchers for first of May, 2017, at $32,060.28, and the May, 2017, $13,974.11. May, 2017, total $43,034.39.
Okay, Mr. Wilson has submitted to approve the voucher expenditures for the month of May, as he noted. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Submitted by Mr. Schei. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that motion is carried.
That motion is carried.
It's now our privilege and a long-awaited opportunity to hear a special report from our Civil West Engineering representative on our wastewater treatment alternatives. Now, what was your name again for the public?
My name is Matt Wadlington.
Matt Wadlington, great. Okay, may I take the podium?
Thank you, Mayor Smith and council members. My name is Matt Wadlington from Civil West Engineering. We've been working on the City of Vator wastewater facilities plan amendment. A brief history, the city's been working on looking for new wastewater treatment for 14 years, since, I think, 2004 was the original report. That was updated in 2009. There was another report generated in 2015, and we are looking to update that 2015 report with some additional information. What I'll be talking about real quick is the low-pressure collection system alternatives, seasonal discharge requirements, and how they relate to effluent land treatment, the year-round discharge requirements, wastewater treatment alternatives, including activated sludge, sequence batch reactors, and lagoon upgrades, as well as other site improvements. And we're going to talk about costs today. So starting off, one of the things we discussed from the very beginning, one of the options that we wanted to look at was a low-pressure collection system. So what we'd be doing is replacing your gravity collection system with a system of pumps that would pump everyone's sewer through a low-pressure force main to the treatment plant. And this would replace all the gravity system in town. And the thought is, is that would drastically, drastically reduce your inflow and infiltration, the amount of rainwater that gets in the system. So we looked at that, there was a couple different methods that we looked at. We looked at grinder pumps, where everyone would have a small little pump station in their front side or backyard, which would then pump through a low-pressure system. We looked at septic tank effluent pumps, which would require everyone having a septic tank installed. That was pretty quickly identified as more expensive, and so we didn't go a whole lot further once we identified it as more expensive than the grinder pumps. And then we also looked at vacuum collection system, which would have a central vacuum unit, most likely at the treatment plant, and would basically suck all the wastewater from the houses. What we came up with in costs was that the low-pressure system with individually powered, which means that everyone hooks into everyone's house, and everyone's house powers their own system. That and the vacuum pressure system were pretty much the same cost, but they were $5.7 million. That was quite a bit more than we had hoped originally, but we wanted to proceed with that in the thought that having this system in place would reduce the treatment costs by that much or more, offering a net savings by doing this. So those are the costs we came up with, we'll come back to those in a minute. We also looked at receiving water considerations and treatment technology drivers. The 2014-15 report that was done recommended a lagoon upgrade and then discharging to the Calitz River. Based on regulation changes in the Calitz River after that plan was made, that option no longer was feasible. In order to treat well enough to discharge to the Calitz River would be basically the same level of treatment that you need to discharge to the Olaquod Creek, which you do now. That's not to say that there aren't other advantages to discharging to the Calitz River. It provides a lot better mixing, especially in the summer months when the Olaquod Creek is low. But the major impetus for doing that was removed when the regulations changed to no longer allow more relaxed discharge. There were other concerns with the Calitz, environmental concerns, wetlands, land acquisition costs was a big one, once that started being looked into. It turned out not to be as easy as I think was originally thought. There are cultural concerns, tribal and historically significant lands, fishing areas. We did look at still discharging to the Calitz, like I said, to achieve better mixing, but the costs to get there ended up being prohibitive, so it didn't end up being our lowest-cost option. The Olaquod Creek is where we currently discharge, it's just adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. There are concerns with effluent discharge into the low flows, degrading water quality and aquatic species habitat. That is particularly noticed in the summer months when the flows are low, temperatures are high, it makes discharge into the creek difficult. There's not a lot of available mixing because the flows in the creek are low, as you might expect. We've worked with ecology to come up with some anticipated permit limits for discharge into the creek for the winter and the summer months, which we've used to develop treatment Another thing that we looked at, we kind of came with two unique views. One was the pressure collection system, and one was a seasonal discharge and in the summer months, doing a land application or land treatment. The initial thought was, gee, you've got a forest right across the river, it's owned by a warehouse, and it would be a great location to discharge water. We looked at that originally, and the soils are not conducive to land discharge, and it's just too steep. Water would run off before it had a chance to infiltrate into the ground. So we looked around at different sites around town that may be available, that may meet the requirements. We found a couple. One of the most promising is the Jorgensen Timberland, which is about two miles north of the treatment plant. It's a timber property, it has flat area, the soils look promising. The downside is that it's two to two-and-a-half miles away from the treatment plant, and it's at the top of a ridge. So it would require that we pump up to that elevation. In addition to the length, means we're probably going to have to have two pump stations, one at the treatment plant and another one halfway there to get it up there. So we looked at that and costed that out. There are other properties, but they're questionable as to their available size and soil properties. So the year-round discharge, these are some of the permit limits that we're looking at that are being difficult for year-round discharge into the creek. There's a copper requirement that is going to be new. It's unknown how much copper you have in your wastewater is kind of unknown at this point. The Department of Ecology has discussed this and kind of will allow a phased approach where we can create a treatment plant that will treat for the primary constituents, and then we'll do testing and find out how much copper may be in the effluent, and then develop an effluent treatment method that would reduce the copper further, if necessary. Similarly, ammonia is going to be a concern. We have existing permit levels and anticipated permit levels. The average monthly is going to go down by three times about, so it's going to be more Again, it's unknown what ammonia is going to be in the effluent, so that would be a phase-two approach to treat that. And then temperature is a big one. The temperature of the effluent has been, I think, as high as, in the high 80s, I think, coming out of the wastewater treatment plant into the river. That would change to 19 degrees Celsius, which is cooler than that substantially. So there are methods for reducing temperature. One of the problems now is that it's a big lagoon and sits there and just gets heated by the sun, and it takes days for that wastewater to go through there, and it just gets warm by the sun. So one method is to create a treatment method that's quick, that just treats it and discharges it and doesn't let it get heated. There are also mechanical methods for chilling it. So we've looked at that. So the effluent discharge, so if we were to separate it and do land treatment during the summer, we wouldn't be required to do these other treatments that would reduce the summer effluent numbers. Our land treatment, what we looked at for pumping it up to the Jorgensen Timber property is about $2.2 million. So we take that and we compare it to the cost of actually treating the copper, the ammonia, and the temperature, which total 824, and as it sits there, it doesn't look feasible. But there's a little bit more to it. I'll get back to that in a minute. The treatment systems alternatives that we looked at, we looked at quite a few. I want to kind of summarize the top three that we've identified. An earthen basin activated sludge, we would take the existing treatment plant, do some grading, reline portions of it, add aerators, and make it into an activated sludge-style treatment plant. We would need an equalization basin to kind of attenuate the peak flows that come in, so that we can have a little bit smaller treatment plant. That's relatively easy. We could re-purpose Lagoon 1 into an equalization basin, an aeration basin, and a clarifier, which are your primary treatment components, or your primary treatment components. Lagoon 2 would turn into sludge storage, and you would be required every year to dispose of your sludge. Most cities would do that in the summer by land application of the sludge. And then Lagoon 3 would no longer be in the treatment process. Lagoon 3 is one of the problems now in that it's shallow and big, and the water just cooks and doesn't get a lot more treatment.
For clarity's sake here, when you label that treatment system alternatives, this earthen basin is not part of the pressurized system?
No, no, so the treatment is just what's going to be at the treatment plant, and it's independent of the collection system and is independent of the discharge. So right now, the north basin, the north lagoon at the treatment plant is about an acre in size. The second one is a little bit smaller than that, maybe three-quarters of an acre, and Lagoon 3 is a big one, it's three to four acres.
And what's the cost of this?
To get rid of the sludge through the lagoon 2 and you... I'll, okay, next slide. The sequence bioreactor, or SBR, is a basin that fills up, aerates, and then decants. It's a similar process, it's an activated sludge process. It's a little bit more technical than a basin activated sludge, but certainly something that your operator would be able to do. It has higher energy costs, but the costs are competitive. The other thing we looked at was upgrading your lagoons, adding some aerators and doing a similar lagoon upgrade as was recommended in the 2015 report. Now we get to the fun, costs. The earthen base activated sludge capital cost was $3.6 million. Sequence bioreactor was $4.2 million, and the lagoon upgrade was $3.2 million. Now, the lagoon upgrade requires that we do the summer land treatment, because a lagoon can't treat to the quality that's needed to be able to discharge in the summer. So if we do the lagoon option, we have to do the land application option. But that's part of it, that's already included. So right now, we're looking at the lagoon upgrade as our lowest-cost alternative. Now, these are just capital costs, they don't include the environmental costs, engineering costs, contingencies, these are just base numbers, so I don't want, don't want us to compare those with the numbers that we got from the last report yet, and we'll get there.
May I ask a clarifying question? You said the lagoon upgrade, the $3.2 million, includes the cost of the, includes that $2.2 million?
It does.
For the Jorgensen Timberland?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So these are other things that are going to be needed, so we'll need headworks, which are your... So we'll need a, we'll need headworks, which are your primary screen and that's what just takes out the trash out of the, out of the water. That'll be needed with any, with any treatment option that we look at. A partial flume to measure how much flow will be needed. Disinfection of the wastewater at the end will be needed regardless of the treatment. So these are all, all additional costs that are, that are needed regardless of the treatment alternative selected. Disinfection and then removing the existing biosolids, so the annual cost of getting rid of those, of that sludge every year. So when we look at the, at the total cost, headworks, almost 200,000. The different treatment methods, earthen base activated sludge is 3.6, SBR 4.2. The lagoon upgrade, this is the, this is the raw lagoon upgrade cost without the pump, which would then have to be added to this, the 2.2 for the pump. And then the copper removal would be a phase two that we'd have to get into once we see what our effluents have.
And that would be required no matter which of the three processes?
It may not be required if we do the land application in the summer because it's a, it's a summertime only requirement. Is that right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we, if we go to lagoon upgrade with a land application, the copper, the ammonia and the temperature concerns go away.
Do we, do we lease that land that we would be dumping the zone or is that the city takes on as the lease of the land?
There, there would have to be an agreement made between, between the city and the property owner and whether that's a lease, an easement, a purchase. We're not quite, quite there yet. I mean, that would have to be negotiated and, but one of those yet. So, so we're looking at the totals. Earthen base activated sludge, we have 5 million. Sequence bioreactor is 5.6 and the lagoon upgrade is 4.1. So obviously this is looking right now as our, as our lowest cost option.
Is the lagoon option assuming current flows with the current INI issues?
Yeah. That's a good point and I, so what we looked at for the, for the pressure collection system were those costs alone were, were similar to these options. And so these costs are for the maintaining the existing collection system. We were hoping that by, by adding that pressure collection system, it would reduce the, the treatment costs, but our treatment costs weren't big enough to be able to be reduced that much. So these are, these are again, without, without the engineering contingency fees. But I, but I think we're, we're coming to a number that's looking much more feasible than, than what we had seen before. Even if we ended up going with a, with a more of a constructed treatment plan, our costs are going to be more feasible than what we've seen before. So again, these costs include removing the existing biosolids and I think that cost for removing it ended up being $120,000, I believe. I'll have to look into the detailed cost estimates and see, but that is included in all three of those options. The headworks, treatment and then disinfection. And then the discharge if we go with the, with the land application. That's it. I want to forward real quick to a, to kind of a summary of the previous reports. The 2008 report had a project cost of 6.4 million. That was for an oxidation ditch. They quickly came back and changed that in 2009 and up that to 10 million. I should say that these costs are forwarded to today's dollars. So the costs that they had then were less, but making, making it so we can compare apples to apples, we increased these costs to 2017 dollars. The 2015 report recommended lagoon upgrades and a discharge to the, to the Calipps River. That current cost is 6.9 million dollars. The next closest one was the in-ground activated sludge and that was 8.7. So, so what we're looking at is going to be, you know, certainly, certainly cheaper than your lease cost option by a bit. We're still, we're still not, I wouldn't say these cost estimates are 100% finalized, but, but we're, I think, within a, within a range that we're comfortable saying that it's, it's looking better than what we had. I'll now go back to a question.
I have a question.
Okay.
I just, I was thinking as you were going through the alternatives and thinking about, again, about how in the winter months we have so much extra rainwater that gets in our system and that causes our, our, our lagoon system to not work properly because it forces things through too fast and it doesn't have enough time to get cleaned. And then in the summer months, we have the problem where the creek is so low that we have to meet these really stringent requirements for the effluent to go into. We have less rainwater getting into our systems, so our, our system is able to do its job better. It's still not doing it great, but at least it's doing it better. But then we run into the additional problem of the creek, the receiving water being so low that we have to. Has there been any thought or would it be ridiculous to consider a combination of the two of like having a system that, you know, one of, I don't know, one of the bioreactors or whatever, in conjunction with our lagoon system to help like in the winter months when there's so much extra flow to, to assist it, to, I don't know if that would make any...
Yeah. I mean, we certainly did look at, at options that would, that were a hybrid. What we came, came to was that we're, we're basically adding those costs. There wasn't a lot of shared costs. We were having an SBR, for example, in addition to replacing your lagoon and those costs tended to be additive instead of complementary. But we did, we did look at that and we did look at, at options of putting in a bigger equalization basin that would take those, those big flows in the winter and kind of store them until the, until the flows died down and then would pump it back into the treatment and treat it. But those, those costs and additional pumping costs ended up being more than, more than it was just to treat those.
Are you creating, I'm going to say mine's a large, will you even that you're planning on not using anymore? That could be used to contain waters that have been collected?
It, it could be. If it's collected on the, on the front end, if we're collecting raw sewage, it would have to be relined and rebuilt. So there's additional costs there. The equalization basin that we, that we sized with the earthen, earthen activated sludge treatment alternative that we looked at was big enough to allow for the, for the peak day flows to pass through the, the treatment plant and the peak hour flows would, would be sent into that equalization basin.
I know, Kathy, you had a question.
I just wanted to try and stood that phasing part of it. So the parent low alternative is 4.1 million dollars. But that is for phase one, which allows you to do more testing of the copper and temperature stuff? And am I correct that then more might be needed later?
Yes and no. That, correct, that the phase one would, would get us to the point where we could test. That particular option, the 4.1 was our, was our option that we're discharging the summer months to the land.
Oh.
And so, so we wouldn't have to worry about...
That's right.
Testing more.
Okay.
The, and now is the, the discharge requirements to the land, am I correct that those wouldn't have ammonia or temperature or copper limits?
That's, you're into groundwater standards when you talk to land treatment. So you have some monitoring wells in the Springfield and I think some of the requirements are drinking water standards in the groundwater. But the, they may not, they're probably not as stringent as going to the old one.
So there probably will be still some, some, a phase two investigation done to monitor those wells and if, if those are being contaminated, then additional treatment would, would be required.
Right.
But, but yeah, in general, land, land application, land treatment is less, less stringent than discharge of service water.
Okay. Julie?
Yes. Matt, I was curious in the, excuse me, the money part. On your graph it was 6.9 million and then it was 303,000 per year. Is that the city's payment on that 6.9 million?
That was for the...
I think you're on that graph there. See the, the Calipps River, the lagoon upgrade?
Okay, yeah. The, the, this 87,000 is just...
O and M.
It's not a repaying a loan.
No, that's what...
It's just operation.
Operation. And then back on the next graph or the next little spreadsheet you had, it said 330,000. What is that 20-year annual life cycle cost?
I think, that's a good question. I'm not sure what, what they have there.
Sure. Is, is there any money on the 6.9? Is there any money that Kathy's, sorry Kathy, will you be giving any money or is this just the city's cost in my, or 6.9?
I bring my checkbook to everything.
I know. That's here.
Well, we're not talking 6.9, we're talking 4.1 plus contingency plus engineering.
Plus all of that, okay.
So that's better.
Which, which may, may get it closer to that six point something by the time that that's added.
So, so yeah, same as always, Department of Ecology has grants and loans, Community Development Block grant has grants, USDA World Development has grants.
So is, so generically, what type of figure would we be looking at not to hold you to the fire?
They will do an affordability index review, which means they will look at your, if you were to take X amount of loan to build this, if it's all loan, what does that do to your monthly rates? And they'll look at what your monthly rates would be compared to your median household income and they look at a percentage. So if it's over 2% of your median, or the affordability index over 2%, you might get offered better terms on the loans. If it gets higher than that, you might be offered part grant, part loan. So each agency does a little bit different, but in a nutshell, that's it. They do kind of a hardship analysis or affordability, yes.
I would note here in our previous efforts to identify the lowest cost and best alternative is that we have vowed as a council, elected officials, to go after every penny of grant funding that might be available and we will all take our tin cups and we will pound our elected officials' tables. Toledo, I can't give an exact figure, but my sense is that they ended up getting about 70% of grant funding for their much more expensive system. And I don't think we could, that would be a miraculous accomplishment in today's world, but if we can't get 50% at least, I'd be irritated.
Kathy, is there a, is there a mechanism that brings all the funding agencies to the same table to talk about who can do what?
Me.
We had that funding kind of discussion with you, but yeah. The others are very well aware of the plan for this project and yeah, we will, you would need, you would apply for ecology funding first, this can be the advice, see what the offer you get from that is, see if you were to get any additional grant funding, if it would replace the ecology's loan or if it just replaces the ecology's grant. And that goes back to the hardship analysis they do. So the maximum amount of grant you can get from ecology, if your rates are, you know, really, really high, is 5 million dollars. So that, I'm not saying you get 5 million dollars or that they will have 5 million dollars of grant, but 5 million out of, you know, 7 million is way better than 5 million out of 10, though. And just, I just want, I know I've said this a lot of times, just want to remind you that whatever the annual O and M costs are, that is paid for by your rates. You don't get grants or loans for O and M costs, just for capital costs.
Now Jill, is that something that we have to have our income surveys still to get?
Some of the funding, the CDBG funding would require us to do that and I'm not familiar enough with any of the other ones to know.
There's going to be new American Community Survey data, not census data, but kind of the new census company, coming out in, I think, 2018. So you guys might go back on the list. We'll see.
Good. Another thing to consider is depending on the, on the funding that you're offered and that you select, it may come with requirements for additional environmental reporting, for additional surveys. So there may be costs associated with getting grant money that wouldn't be there if you're doing just loan money. I would recommend you take the grant and spend some of it to do that additional surveying, but yeah.
Okay. Well, given the time that we've allocated for this and we're hitting our head on the time ceiling, but that was an excellent presentation that I can speak for the council. It is certainly about 2 million dollars cheaper than anything we've seen or heard before.
So that's grinder pumps, that's 5.7 million plus the lagoon upgrade is what we're...
No, no grinders.
Oh, okay.
Just this collection system, we've got no collection system upgrades.
Correct.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Can we get copies of your slides?
Yes, I will give you, I'll send you an email with a, with a copy of this. And just real quick, we're, we're at this point now, I anticipate within, within a month, we'll be wrapping this up and submitting you something, a final report that we'll then get to, get to ecology and Kathy and let everyone start chewing on it.
All right. Well, we've heard repeated promises from Mr. Trump that he's going to allocate $1 trillion for infrastructure improvements and we're going to go writing him a letter too.
I guess we'll have to give him time to carry all of his rink down now.
Yeah.
Take a while before he shows up again.
Might be, yeah. All right, then with that, thank you. Proceed, we'll proceed with our meeting while you disassemble.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Bet you not. Thank you Kathy and Al for coming. We'll be in touch.
See you guys.
Good night, Al. So now let's move expeditiously forward with our agenda. Next item is our public comment. Do we have any individuals?
Yes.
Okay. We have three individuals who've signed up for a public comment. The first is Cynthia Bradcliffe, number two would be Judy Castillo and number three would be Scott Groves. Okay. We thank you for your willingness to share thoughts and observations with the council. Some of you may be new to this process, so I'll remind you that you have three minutes to share your thoughts and sentiments. And given what I anticipate hearing, I would inform all who make presentations that we will not tolerate any... that we will not tolerate any disrespect or incivility or commentary that demeans any elected official or public employee in any form. This is an opportunity for you to just share thoughts, and it is not an interrogation or a decision-making process with the council. So there, is that understood? Okay, so with that, let's proceed. Mrs. Bradcliffe?
I'm guessing that respect goes both ways, right? Okay. I'm not going to talk about the building department. You're welcome. I attended the big meeting last Saturday. It was a really good meeting. It was very exciting to hear that the city was going to, you know, get involved and do some improvement. Loved the presentation, liked the idea that so many people were there. Castle School District handed out these flyers. And one of the issues they brought up is how do we let people know that this is going to happen? And there's going to be a preschool, or pre-K, I think they call it, coming into the new, or to where the school used to exist, and soccer fields. One of the ways that we already have established are the city website and the city Facebook page, which, and I know this is my opinion, but they're not being used effectively. I printed out the website today. Again, it still says Happy New Year, and there's a council vacancy. So we have room maybe to add some of these other announcements, like the car cruise is coming up next weekend. And we have the fireworks show in a few weeks. And, you know, we have this that we did even put on the Facebook page. I did a quick thing last night just to put it on my Facebook page. I don't know a whole lot of people in town. I got within just a couple hours, 35 people, 33 of which I didn't even know, that said, oh, that's great news, how do I get more information? So let's use our website and our Facebook page. Let's update it, let's get some announcements on there. Let's make sure all the buttons work. Couple of the buttons I tried didn't actually go anywhere. Maybe that was by design, I don't know. Maybe they didn't want me getting updates, I don't know. So, at the very least, let's make sure everything works and let's take off some of the outdated stuff. And, you know, maybe we can get some more people involved. 90% of the people will check Facebook and a website long before they ever read a newspaper or read a Baltimore. So we have to use that. And then also, it's the younger people involved. You know, I haven't seen my grandson's eyes for months now. He's always, you know, looking down at his phone. So, and even my husband and I, even though we're the older generation, we will look at a website about a place to visit long before we visit that place. So we really need to utilize this activity and make sure that it's updated regularly and has all of our activities that are coming out with dates and times and even people to contact. Winlock Egg Day is not sponsored by the city. It's sponsored by the Winlock Lions. And courtesy for their citizens, they put the application form for the parade and to be a vendor on the city website. And they say this is not a city-sponsored event, but if you want more information, you want to be involved, contact, I don't know, somebody from the Winlock Lions Club. So I would ask the council to somehow maybe see that that gets done and we can maybe get more information out to our citizens. Okay?
Well, thank you.
Most impressive. We've just run out of sand.
I practiced.
It's the first. All right. Well, let's see. Judy, you're up first.
Judy Castello, 709 A Street. I have three very short things. The first is a report on the Little Falls Community Center. We have had between five and 10 people every day coming in to play with puzzles and put those together. No subson has been there, Leona has come in. We have a paper crafting class starting next Wednesday from 1 to 3. And then on Thursday, we have a sewing class, knitting and crocheting from 1 to 3. So I am now looking for a used, or be happy to purchase from anyone, a flat-screen TV. As soon as school is out, we will have a little movie theater for the children. And I'm hoping to have about six seats. They'll get popcorn and a theater ticket to watch their favorite little movie over in the corner. So if anyone has an extra flat screen laying around they want to sell to me, just contact me. Anyway, it's going very well. Mr. Wilson will be coming in the next two weeks to do a stained glass demonstration that he does this. He's already got five people waiting for him. So anyway, everyone is getting involved over there, and I'm happy to say that it's a hit.
Where is it located exactly?
It is located across from the post office, gray building with the pink tram. And it is the thrift store and the community center.
Oh, I got you.
I was at the park board meeting the other night. And one thing I wanted to clarify very quickly with you, Mayor Ken, is Apple Electric is not buying a part for the door mechanism.
Right.
Jill is in charge of that. Well, Ken and I were in conversation, and I just wanted to clarify that we were not involved in that. It was something that we passed on.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that. While at the park board meeting, we came up with a lot of things. Everything from spreading the bark dust, painting oil gel, on and on and on and on. The mayor stated that our John would be doing a lot of these things. Everything from mowing the parks and blah, blah, blah. And we also are talking about developing Park Number Three. And having this brought to my attention, I went home and thought about this. John only has 32 hours. He is the hardest-working person in the whole wide world. And I wondered if the council wouldn't really think about giving him 40 hours a week. And I've never spoken to John, so I have no idea if this suits him or not. But he really, you know, to put this, to put all the stuff that the park board was talking about back on his truck even, you know, mowing those parks is a big deal. You know, weed eating, I mean, there's just so many things there. And then to add all these new, what sounded like new responsibilities that the park board is coming up, I thought maybe we might want to suggest thinking about that. So it's just a thought.
Thank you. Well...
Thank you.
Two in a row.
Oh, I have one break left. We need to teach them. We're talking now.
Yeah, we'll see, yeah, Scott.
I don't know much. I was wishing the Sheriff's Department was going to be here because I did want to address them regarding our wonderful stop sign that we got put in there at 8th and D. It's not very effective. So I wondered if it would be helpful, because I'm very people. I sit there, I have the joy of being able to be around my home throughout the day. I've sat there, I think it was on Monday, and literally watched three people run it, not even slow down, 25 miles an hour right through it. And there's kids that come through there, and they come down 8th Street on their bicycles, and they turn left there onto D Street, and something bad is going to happen there. It's just going to be a matter of time. So with the big meeting that happened with what the school district is doing, I know I briefly talked to Jill earlier this week about that being a school zone, the speed limit being dropped down, maybe getting some speed bumps. I don't know why people feel that it's a drag strip between 7th and 9th in there. I just don't get it. And, you know, they come up to the stop sign, and then it's a drag race to the next one. And there's kids, you know, there's kids and dogs and...
Any possibility of getting license plates?
For what?
Good set of binoculars, maybe.
The kids don't really do anything if they're not there witnessing it. And I wish they were here because if they sat behind, uh-oh, Travis, is that right? No, that's not right. Sarah and Mike's daughter.
Trent.
Trent. Thank you, yeah. If they sent me along that alley behind, behind there.
Just on the north.
It's a great spot to be able to watch that stop sign because people come up from 7th, and they don't look bad like this if there's cops sitting on that alley. That would just, I mean, that's revenue for the city too, right? When they, when we get parts of, yeah?
Yeah.
And I really wish, why aren't they here? Aren't they supposed to be here? Who's monitoring our meeting for security? Mike's gone, Sheriff's not here, what's going to happen? Other than that, and then the only thing, other question I had was with regards to the waste management thing that he was talking about, the property that was being mentioned, Jorgensen, I think he said. Has that party been introduced to this? And are they open to negotiations for even some kind of simple adjustment?
I believe, they have made, yes, they have made, reached out to the property owners. And I know at least one of them had gotten back. I'm assuming that two got back with them. Haven't verified that, but they did send letters out to the property owners, so.
So it's still up in the air. Once the council decides which is the alternative, then they can aggressively decide how to approach the Jorgens.
Just wasn't sure if they were aware of it yet or not.
Okay.
Are we done? The speed limit thing for that, would that be a school district thing or is that a city?
City, city thing. Okay, but I said this to the council, we'll probably entertain a conversation on a future agenda on that topic, I guess. We've talked speed bumps before, so, yes.
I didn't sign up for my three minutes.
Well, you have a, you're a council.
You've got a line on you.
I would like to say that there's going to be a gentleman that's been retired from the Navy for about 70-some years tomorrow with his uniform on at Fred Meyer's out of Poppies for the American Legion. I'd like everybody to show up with a few dollars, not pennies, and put it in his cap. Thank you.
All right, well, there's a...
Which Fred Meyer? Yeah. Which one?
Which Fred Meyer? Which one?
Fred Meyer's up in Longview.
Okay. Newly noted, made a matter of public record. All right.
Well, I've been doing it for years for the American Legion and the top salesman.
Well, I can see one, yeah. All righty then. With that, we thank all those of you who came and were willing to share your thoughts with the city council. So with that, we're ready to proceed with our official city business. First item, number one, the council to consider planning committee appointments. You are aware that we've had some vacancies on the planning committee, and it's been critical that we restaff it with qualified individuals who have the competency and the leadership characteristics to actually function effectively on that planning committee. Particularly since our city planner, Gary Cooper, is ready to involve them in the actual comprehensive plan that he's preparing for 2018. So I've dedicated a considerable amount of my personal time reaching out to residents who meet the qualifications. And I am prepared now to submit their names to you for your confirmatory consideration. You will note in the letter that you have in front of you that two of the individuals have been serving on the planning committee already. But they had both exceeded the time constraints per the ordinance. But they could be resubmitted for a membership on it with a new application and a new supportive vote from the council. And so I've included their names on the list of five as well. And that would be Scott Gross, who is present with us, sitting in the back row, and Victoria Parsons, who is not able to be here at this time. So they're experienced and have served in that capacity. The three new individuals are Ken Asher. He is a new move into the community. There's no time restriction. You don't have to be a resident for a year as a city council member. Teresa Holder, she's been here for quite a while, very competent woman. She has indicated that she can't be here tonight. She works at night in Longview. And Tabitha, no, that was Tabitha Simpson, I'm sorry. Teresa Holder is out of town at the moment, so she asked to be excused. So with that, I can tell you that all of these individuals are intelligent. They're, as you'll note, they're community-minded. And I would highly recommend it all to you for your confirmatory vote. They would need to be sworn in. They need to be sworn in at our first planning committee meeting, which is being scheduled. Did you hear all of that, Mike?
Yeah, I only, I only heard four.
Okay. It was Ken Asher.
I got Scott Gross, Victoria Parsons, Ken Asher, Teresa Holder.
And Tabitha Simpson.
Thank you.
All of these individuals were at the big meeting on Saturday. They were mingling, so you may have talked to them in your comings and goings.
Who is it we have here now?
We have Scott Gross. Scott, seated in the back. So...
That the only one?
Yeah. And there is no official requirement for them to be present to be confirmed by the council. Yeah, just in case. We do have a comment from the public, would the council care to entertain that? Yes.
Did you post this so other humans in the city can maybe put their name up and say, hey, I did? Not me, you know, but others.
Yeah, it was actually put in the newspaper, the Town Cryer. It was in the Vader View, but there's no legal requirement to post it.
But maybe not, just so you get more people other than the same people. Nothing against Mr. Corl, but the same people. And there might be other people interested that just don't know about it, you know?
We've done that in the past. Mr. Wilson has asked that we do it, and it's generated one or two individuals. But we've found that it works best if we have a face-to-face interaction with the individuals. And since there is no legal requirement for it to be done, it's more expeditions and actually more efficient. So, but that's my answer. And it's the mayor's responsibility to identify those candidates. So I would certainly take that under advisement for future reference. But anyway, regardless, that, this is the action I'm requesting the council to consider for tonight.
I would make a motion based on the mayor's recommendation to approve Ken Asher, Scott Gross, Teresa Holder, Victoria Parsons, and Tabitha Simpson to the planning committee.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shai to approve the five individuals articulated in the letter, as he noted. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Uh-huh. Seconded by Mr. Daley. And do you have any other thoughts or observations by the council? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That voting was unanimous, so it's noted that that motion is carried. So thank you very, very much. If any of you, I will do my best to have them come so that you can see them. But we'll proceed with swearing in, and we'll set in motion a planning committee meeting. And I'd invite any and all the people to come to that initial meeting, which will be a training meeting as well, to see who these good people are. Thank you. In my 10 years of experiences, this could be the finest planning committee that I have ever seen in the city of Vader.
And when is that being?
It's how often?
It's being scheduled.
Oh, good.
How often, may I ask, how often the meetings are?
It's as needed.
Oh, as needed.
Yeah, because our city planner is the individual who oversees the function. It's a pretty effective thing, and we're, I'm very confident that they're going to serve our community well. Okay, with that, let's proceed with item number two, which of course is the need that we have to adjourn for an executive session. The objective of this executive session is to discuss with our legal counsel, who represents the city, matters relating to our city enforcement actions in pursuit to RCW 42.30.1101I. And we anticipate that it should last no more than 15 minutes, which means that we will adjourn at this moment, at the time being 7:09, and which means that we will reconvene at 7:24 PM.
One, no, I, I'm not sure about the logistics of how to include Mike in that.
Yep. Mike, could we call him from the phone?
We're going to be calling the city attorney on one line, and I don't think we have the capability of combining the two at one time.
Well, we still have a quorum. Mike, would you be okay if we conduct the executive session and then call you back after it's completed? it's completed?
Yep, that's fine, and I won't hold anything up.
Okay, all right, Mr. Council, are you satisfied with that action? All right, I see a general consensus across the council. So with that, we'll proceed and we'll return at 7:24.
Can you just call me as soon as the attorney ends up so I can try to get a quick just if there is time?
Yeah.
Yes. Absolutely.
25.
Okay.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, so with that having been completed, we can proceed with item number three. That's an update on the stormwater drainage on Seventh Street near Ananen Road. I was made aware that yesterday they were going to engage in that, I haven't heard the final report.
Well.
I was there.
Oh, yeah, let Jason tell, he was there.
We, they were only able to push, push the camera down the pipe about, I don't know, maybe eighty feet, maybe, maybe fifty feet, not very far because the pipe was too big, and so it coiled back on them.
Where, where was this at?
At the corner of Main and 506. By Andy Zapp's kind of.
Down the hill.
And they didn't make it to where you, you told me that there were, that you know that there's a block, they couldn't even make it that far.
Is that far?
Yeah.
So it got worse?
So what?
No.
Well, no, they couldn't push the camera any.
Their, their equipment was not advanced enough to be able to do, theirs was, apparently theirs was good for smaller pipes that are easier to slide down, I guess. They didn't have any power to theirs to force it.
They, they.
Manholes, in that manhole, there's a six inch.
They cut it open. They cut open the pipe and got into it and went down, but, but their equipment wasn't sufficient, wasn't sufficient to go as far as we needed it to go.
They, they suggested that we, we did a couple of things. One, to get the fire department to force water down it, like especially on a dry day, force water down, put a couple thousand gallons down it, and then see if it comes out anywhere. Put some dye in it then and see where it comes out. If it blows back out this way, you know it's plugged somewhere, but hopefully you'd see like a, coming out of the ground, maybe a little bubbly or something. That's what they suggested, and then they also gave John a, a card for a person that would have a, a power driven camera system, where you can actually go in, they can drive it, they can actually look all the way around and drive further, they could, they could go through a long, long pipe with that. So they gave us that, and it's like seven hundred dollars a day for that, yeah.
So we waited all this time for them to do this, and then they did not have the adequate equipment to do it, and they didn't know ahead of time? Well, right, they, they're not, they don't do this professionally. This is the city of Winlock employee, they have a TV thing, they volunteered to do it for us at a cheap price, and so they were helping us out, and they're, they're not like professionals at doing this, and they didn't know that it wouldn't work. They assumed they would be able to do what we needed, and so unfortunately, yeah.
Where did they go through the manhole where that six inch PVC is?
Yes, yes.
From there to there?
They went, they went east.
West, how far they go down?
They didn't get very far.
No, because that's where the railroad dug it up.
Well, they didn't even get down.
They couldn't hit that far because the, the camera, they couldn't push the camera in any further because it, the pipe was too big around, it didn't have enough.
They needed a power on.
Yeah, they needed a power on, so.
And see, that six inch is only in the manhole.
Right, right.
Well, how about across the street? Was, did they do any other checking?
No.
No.
If, if it wouldn't go up that, go down that, they said it's not going to go up that organ pipe hole, and that's this big around, so.
That manhole, I think I was mayor, or maybe I wasn't, but anyway, Tommy's been and his son went in there and we found water, stormwater, going through the manhole, and that manhole then goes to the sewer. And there he was, he was getting all of this winter water going to the sewer they're going. So they put about a, just about like the width of a manhole, they put PVC pipe and routed it in so it wouldn't leak, and then it went that way down towards the Little Creek.
Yep.
Then the mayor was sitting there, Ross McDowell was there with me, and here's Burden and Northern with the backhoe, digging up the old tile, the old clay tile, red clay tile, just throwing it this way. And that was the end of that. Then it started raining again, if I remember right, down on your place, and that's where they had put it, and they tried to run it down the, the old drain. That's a big problem, is they dug up the clay now.
Well, we, we did run a, a line of camera down far enough to see that it was blocked. I know that that was done. So I would say that this has been an exercise in futility, and I agree with you, Leona, that I would have thought they would have seen the pipe they needed to access and probably would have discerned through experience that it wasn't going to work. So I can't sit here and say that I'm all that thrilled with what we've accomplished. So, well, but that's the report.
He said, Ronnie said if we needed sewer lines done, they do those very well, but, but the storm drains and the bigger ones don't, don't work so well.
Okay, well, now we know, all right. All good, all right, well, that's the report, right?
That's the report.
So I think, I think John's actually going to talk to the.
Provac or?
Well, probably, but also to the fire department about getting water, and I know we have to, we have to contact the county because it's county's water, so.
Yeah.
Okay, would the council like us to pursue that?
Maybe. I had a thought, maybe we could coordinate with when they're flushing the manhole, not manhole, the fire hydrants, because they have to flush and dump that stuff, and if we had them routed into our storm drain, we could, wouldn't be costing them anything.
It's actually a long ways.
Is it?
To, there's not a lot of fire hydrants in this town, but it's a long ways to it. I suppose this one is on the border of 506 and First A Street, that's.
Is that a long way from?
It's a long, well, a lot.
Just a thought?
Well, I was thinking they'd take the fire trucks and just stick the hose down and then blast, is that what you?
We may have to pay them for the water.
Oh, I thought, that's what I meant, putting it on the thing and running it into the hole kind of thing.
Oh, that's kind of what I was thinking, was when they have to dump it.
Okay.
Anyway.
Well, well, there, I think the council, we could continue this conversation at our next council meeting, if you'd like us to keep this on there, and we can talk to the fire department, see what they say.
Sounds good.
Be okay with that? All righty, then that'll be our course of action. With that, let's proceed to item number four, the council to consider Resolution 12-2017, the Vader Fee Schedule Update. Hopefully this will prompt some action after our workshop.
I showed a lot of people in town the fee schedule, and they just blew their mind out.
Who did you show it to?
And therefore I'm going to go back, just like I did last meeting, we said I'm going to make a motion that the Vader Fee Schedule Update be not approved until we interview with other people, like Lewis County building people, and maybe Toledo, Winlock, and Castle Rock, and that's my motion to disapprove it.
Okay, you've heard a motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to disapprove Resolution 12-2017. I did have a thought, well, yes, so let's get a second on that, thank you. Do we have a second for that motion? I don't hear a second, so there is insufficient support for that motion to proceed with it. Okay, and I did have a thought here, and I'm just, being with the experience I've gotten, there is an individual who was at the workshop who has property that is, I think, at the heart of this question, if I'm not mistaken. And is the property owner, in fact, your daughter, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, that, my daughter, I got the property up there.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm not sure just what sort of potential conflict of interest there may be.
I'm not getting involved with that.
Well, but nonetheless, she's a family.
Just because, just because of my daughter, I don't think that's a conflict of interest, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I'm just suggesting we might want to look into that. And I, I don't know for sure, but we could, I think it might be wise, because we don't need one of the council members to get caught in a mess here. But I just throw that out there because it just occurred to me, just now, on this action. Yes.
You've got older citizens in this town.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Sanders had the floor.
My concern with this.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 12.
Wait a second, Mike, you probably couldn't hear that Mrs.
Leona.
Leona, who had the, had the floor.
My concern with, with the whole fee issue was the people on fixed income or low income or whatever you want to call it, that want to improve their homes to add this on top of it. I know that they can get a reduced on their water bills, they can get reduced, I believe, on their sewer bills. Is there any way they can get a reduction on their permit costs as well? Is there, is there anything in the budget that can help these people so that they can? Because to me it was like, you know, can they fix their house, or can they do this, or can they do that? And you add this cost onto it, and they might not be able to, and we want them to be able to. So is there anything in the budget where they can get a lower rate on the permit fees? Is there anything we can do there?
That, that's something council can consider. Whether we have extra money in the budget, we never have extra money in the budget. However, council could look at the budget and make decisions to move money from one line that, you know, decide, well, maybe this, you know, spending the money on this is more important than where we had originally appropriated the funds. Council can, can look at that and make changes like that anytime they want to. I mean, at this point, we're looking at setting the fees to cover the costs, and that's what this, or this resolution is about. That would be a separate thing that we could look at, separate from this, and do as a separate, it would be actually probably an ordinance instead of a resolution, because the budget is set by ordinance. But council can look at the budget, they, you can come in and talk to me and ask questions if there's somewhere that you think that we could take, you know, money out of, and, you know, if you want to talk about that and talk to each other in the council meeting, sure, that's something you could, you could look at doing it however you want.
I just think it would be sad if somebody didn't redo their portion, didn't, you know, fix their property because they can't afford to do that and pay the permit cost. It would be nice if we had a way to work around it, for those that really need it, not for those that can do it, just don't want to, but for those that really need the help.
Below certain income.
Right, I mean, if they qualify for, like I say, to lower their water bill or to lower their, you know, sewer bills or whatever's available for them, if they qualify for that, surely they could qualify, you know, to get some assistance elsewhere, you know, otherwise, so.
Definitely a possibility.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, Mike, did you hear all that, Mike?
Yes, I did. And so, so now do I say?
Yes.
To make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Vader Fee Schedule as written, Resolution 12-2017.
Well, okay, we've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution 12-2017 as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, but I was seconded by Mr. Daley. Any additional thoughts or opinions?
I think that if we approve the fee schedule right now, because as of right now, that we're not even, we're not even breaking even, even with this fee schedule, but we have to get it at least done, and then we can, I think that we should look into a different building inspector maybe, or trying to figure out some of the costs to cut them down. Maybe we can find somebody local, I know that during the workshop, there was a lot of people talking about other companies that were cheaper than him, so definitely this is a base fee schedule, and then after that, we can move on to figuring out how to cut our costs based on that.
Toledo people and.
Okay, that, did you all hear that? Okay, interesting insight. I, I could tell you that we did do some research from our workshop until today, and we did talk about the fee structure with our current contracted individual, and he himself said, you go for it. If you think you can find somebody cheaper, you, you go after him. But am I overstating? He said, good luck, and he's very confident. And I would add, from my experience, that it's one thing to go to the city county or city, other cities, you compare what they've got, but, and it was stated in the workshop by an individual here who is seeking to have a change of this, that the city of Winlock had rejected our employee, well, that was false. They have hired our person because he is the most expensive one and most respected.
Most expensive one.
Uh-huh, yeah, his fees, what did I say?
Most expensive.
Slipper. But I thought it'd be wise to get that fact out, and it's so unwise to compare our city with others. We're taught and trained and counseled to not do that because every city is different, and we don't have the economic foundation of other communities. But what our person indicate may clear that Naperville and Winlock are in a world of hurt because their fees for years have been way too low, and that our fees are in actuality not that high, and we, I think we've demonstrated that we're in the hole on those things. So I know we need to be sympathetic, but I tell you, there isn't anybody more sympathetic than the mayor, because we're the ones who get to apply what you're approving. And, and I can tell you, our city clerk gets the abuse of individuals who come in with very little respect and without fact-driven argument to me. So, but I'm defending your actions, but it's your decision, not the mayor's or the city clerk's. I made that a matter of public record. So there, that's what I have to say.
There's nobody here, but. You want me to run over there and sit down?
The actor.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Well, we do, yes, I'm sorry, I'll be sure. Well, we have a first and a second, so, motion, so any other thoughts, observations? With that, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
A matter of record, aye opposed, Andy Wilson.
Duly noted, but the vote has been four to one in favor of it, so the motion is carried, and thank you all, and we will do our best to implement it, and then the council has the privilege of modifying it and doing.
Thank you guys for putting up with that extra meeting and week to get it all clarified.
Yeah, it is good. Yeah, okay, then excellent. Now, item number five, council to consider Resolution 13-2017. This is a Department of Ecology loan amendment. Fortunately, it's a pretty. Fortunately, it's a pretty pro forma function.
Just giving us an extra year.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt Amendment Two to the DOE loan agreement as written.
Mr. Shai has submitted a motion to approve that resolution as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Leona. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I heard none in opposition, so that motion is carried unanimously. Last item, council to consider Resolution 14-2017, the Centralia Landfill Closure Group Interlocal Agreement, Amendment Number Three. This is also very straightforward.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 14-2017, adopting Amendment Number Three to the Centralia Landfill Closure Interlocal Agreement, included as Exhibit A substantially as written.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Daley submitted that motion as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. Okay, absent any other thoughts or observations, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you all, that concludes our agenda, and I declare this council meeting adjourned at 7:48 PM. Thank you all for being here, and to the public for their participation.